So much good news in Meridian.
Council will call the minute hour for the record. It is October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at four thirty-six P. M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, Councilman Overton, Councilwoman Perro, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Oakland, Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is the option of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Oakland. Move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion second to adopt the agenda. Is public is there in discussion? If not, all favor same by saying I.
I.
Oppose name. Guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item up is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one of them.
I move approval of this consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
A motion a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there in discussion? If not, all favor same by saying I.
I.
Post name. Guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items from the consent agenda. So next we will go department commission reports and first one up is item twenty-one, the biosolids project update. Turn this over to Ms. Smith A.
Right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. What's more exciting than biosolids? I'm not sure.
Was wait was that were you starting off with a joke?
Oh, no. Because I can't see it on. Perfect. All right. So you may remember back in twenty twenty-one, we started looking at potential projects that would be eligible for use with the city's allocated ARPA funding. So when we first started that, we looked at really three high level things. So would the project be eligible under that federal funding? Would the project be designed and constructed by the end of twenty twenty-six because that's a hard requirement of this funding? And then based on what we knew internally, would the ROI be a long term favorable impact to the city? So with that in mind, a couple of the public works projects that moved forward were the biosolids dryer and the biogas utilization project. So we've received more information on both of those and I'm here to present our recommendations for moving forward. So starting with the biosolids dryer, so we have a five million dollar placeholder of the ARPA money for this project. So I know you guys all know what biosolids is, but for anybody listening in, it is the solid end product of the wastewater plant. So it's a really nutrient rich soil like material. So today we produce a little over ten thousand tons and that is currently hauled to the Ada County landfill. There's two parts to our disposal of this material. The first is the cost to dispose of it at the landfill. That cost recently just went up from twenty-nine dollars to thirty-two dollars a ton. And we are also charged a fee to haul it up to the landfill. Currently, we contract with a third party hauler and that costs us about three thousand dollars a week. You may also remember back in the beginning of twenty twenty-two, I came to you and asked to purchase our own truck and trailer, knowing that it would save us significant money over the long term, but also knowing that those had a really long lead time. Well, I'm really excited to tell you our truck is in the Treasure Valley and our trailer is slotted to be built the end of December. So we're hopeful that we will start hauling at the beginning of February, but we weren't kidding when we said long lead time on those. Important to know that any ROIs that we did on the dryer, we used our our in-house hauling as the baseline for that. So we weren't double dipping on the ROI for that. We looked at the types of dryers we looked at. We wanted to reduce the volume of the biosolids by four to one. So that reduces both the disposal costs of the landfill and then also the hauling trips. So even if we're self hauling, reducing that volume is important because it reduces staff time, it reduces travel time, emissions, fuel. So there were two main types of dryers that we looked at. We wanted to make sure that whatever dryer we chose, that it could meet the dryness requirements, that it would fit on our site. We wanted to look at the initial capital costs and then also the ongoing operational costs. We looked at the complexity of the equipment and whether or not staffing would be required. And we also looked at expandability. So as we continue to grow in the future, could we add on to this? So primarily two types of dryers rose to the top. The first is a thermally enhanced solar greenhouse. So it's just like a greenhouse, but it has a metal floor that you put heat into, which helps accelerate the drying. And the other one was a thermal belt dryer, and that's where an external heat source, in this case heated air, is passed over the solids as it goes over a belt. Both technologies would work, but the primary distinction that made us turn away from the belt dryer and go towards the solar greenhouse is capital cost. So the thermal belt dryer has to go inside of a building. So significantly higher capital costs, about three times as much as the solar greenhouse dryer. The belt dryer is more complex and so it also require additional staffing needs. So we moved forward with the solar dryer for further analysis. So it's really a quite simple operation, which is pretty neat. It's very effective. We made sure to look at it and Meridian's climate. So would it work in the winter, the summer? Do we get enough solar heat? It's kind of neat. We're looking at a circular design. This would be one of the first in the country versus the rectangular design. It cuts footprint and cost. So that's pretty cool. You can also see it really easily fits another one in the future. So that spot on the map is where we currently store our biosolids before it goes to the landfill. So perfect location, not a lot of material handling. And we have several sources of the external heat, so the heat that you put in the floor to make it work more efficiently. You can put in solar collectors, you can use the excess biogas that we flare today, or you can use natural gas. So we have plenty of excess biogas, which we'll talk about. And so our recommendation would be to use that. There's no cost for us to use that excess biogas and it would greatly benefit this this process. So like I mentioned, we had an initial estimate of about five million dollars of ARPA funding. This more detailed analysis is putting us right in at the four point six million dollar range. So we're right in that that bucket where I think that 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 funding will be sufficient. The ROI on this is very positive, so it will result in a savings of between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars a year today. That's with self hauling, that's with the landfill costs as it is. One of the other benefits is that this technology allows us to produce a higher classification of biosolids. And what that means is that in the future, if something like compost or land application became beneficial to the city, we could utilize our biosolids for that use. Another thing that this does is, you know, with the concerns with landfill lifespan and landfill, the landfill filling up. This is a really positive way that we can reduce our volume of what's going to the landfill. So our recommendation is that we proceed with completion of this project. I think it's a really positive project for not only our operations, our financials, our environmental impact. It's a really exciting, I think, project. So switching gears a little bit to talk about the biogas project. So with this one.
Would you mind if we just stop there for any questions council may have specifically about that project? Council camera.
One question. Curious the greenhouse's ability to paint aromas versus the enclosed facility. What's what's the difference between the two?
Um, so they are, our consultant actually thinks that the odors will be better than what they are today with the biosolids just out on the pad. So they're not recommending any auxiliary odor control for this. But it could be added on to either facility in the future if if that was deemed, but they anticipate it being an improvement over what we have today.
Do we know what the improvement is? Again, I'm supportive of the greenhouse approach from a ROI, but also trying to understand like, is it ways and light years better than if it's on the on the belt dryer in an enclosed building versus the the greenhouse? What's what's the difference between the aromas that come from each of those facilities?
Uh, so Councilman Cavanagh, I believe they would be similar because it's similar similar drying, similar process. It's just the greenhouse is less mechanically complex.
Laura, I, and when you're showing the what the current haul ton tonnages, what's the difference in the tonnage post completion of project estimated to be?
Um, so Mr. Mayor, so it's about a four to one reduction. So today we haul seven times a week up to the landfill. They expect, we expect that to decrease to one to two times per week. I don't know off the top of my head what that weight is, but it's.
Twenty, I'm just gonna buy the number twenty-five hundred to three thousand tons compared to the ten thousand tons roughly.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions on that project? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so switching gears to biogas, still related to our biosolids, but our biogas is the natural byproduct of our digestion process. So it's primarily methane and today we flare or we use about forty percent of our gas to heat the digesters to make the digestion process work. About sixty percent of our gas is just flared to the atmosphere under our air permit. So what we looked at was a project that would take the gas and digester gases are really dirty gas as far as the cleanliness of gas goes. So you have to do a lot of pre-treatment to it. You have to remove sulfur, hydrogen sulfides, moisture, siloxanes, particulates to be able to put it into an engine generator. So this process would first clean the gas and then it would compress it and put it into an engine to generate power. One of the challenges of this project is that the process is highly mechanically complex and requires a lot of staff time to keep this up and operational. And then one of our biggest challenges when we looked at this further is the cost of equipment has gone up significantly from what we were anticipating. So we were estimating about a one point five million dollar placeholder for ARPA. The equipment itself was coming in at between four point nine and seven point four million dollars. So that in itself makes the ROI really challenging. The other piece is that because this is mechanically complex, it's, we would anticipate needing another FTE to deal specifically with this piece of equipment, keeping it operational and working. So between the cost of the building and then when we ran the ROI, power is really cheap in Idaho and that that makes the ROI challenging. So between the operation and maintenance and the FTE, when that's offset with the power savings that you would get, it would cost us about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually to operate this equipment. So it's not recommended that we install it at this point. It doesn't make a financial sense for us. That's not to say that in the future, it's not a good technology. If electricity costs continue to go up or equipment costs come down, definitely a good use of that excess gas. One of the other things too, though, so you know, we're not just going to be flaring all of that excess gas anymore is. So this is the graph for the biosolids dryer that you just saw. So the the green lines represent how much of the gas we need to use to heat the digesters. The blue is what was currently, or I guess the gray line is what is currently flared off today. So the did the blue bars are what is would be used by the dryer. After we install the dryer, what will be flared is the difference between the blue bars and the gray bar. So significantly less flaring, definitely great use of that to make the the solar greenhouse work more effectively. So we're really excited because by putting in the dryer, we still will be able to use beneficially reuse much more of the gas than we're using today. So our recommendation is to commit and continue to the biosolids project with the five million dollar ARPA placeholder. And then our recommendation would be to cease the biogas project and return that money back to the ARPA, the city's ARPA fund for use on another city project. So I don't think I need official approval from you guys on anything today, but just more looking for your general buy-in that this is a good direction forward. Commit to the biosolids project. One of our challenges with the ARPA funding is these projects have to be done and completed and spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. So we do have to to get it moving, to get it constructed in that timeframe. So with that, I'll stand for any additional questions.
You are like council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
As well share.
Um, just some comments. I've spent a lot of time with Laura Lee on this and really appreciate the hard work that the team put into understanding these two projects. You know, I think this is what our clean energy resolution is all about, is doing the right thing for the environment when it makes financial sense for the city. Right? And it's at least neutral, if not positive for the taxpayer. Clearly, the biogas project isn't as fruitful as we initially thought, but I love that we can use the biogas to make the biosolids dryer facility even more successful. I think it it looks like it's even better than we initially thought and that it'll actually accomplish a lot of things for the city. So I'm really excited about it. I know you're joking about how, you know, maybe it would be a boring topic, but I like think this is one of the most exciting topics. And I'm really just so enthusiastic about it and appreciate everyone's hard work on it because it's going to help us so much in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Council on additional comments, concerns? Thumbs up? All right. We look forward to seeing this come forward through budget amendments and contracts and all the fun stuff. Thank you. Speaking of budget amendments, next item up is item twenty-two, which is a fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendment does not exceed amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred dollars for Mary McPherson Elementary Pathway. Mr. Barton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here presenting about a budget amendment for one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Like the mayor said, that will fund the pathway connection between Mary McPherson Elementary and Reflection Ridge subdivision. Just as a note on the memo, it says that we have a license agreement to build the pathway across this property. We don't quite have that yet. I thought we would, but there's some final legal edits that we're doing just as of today. They've been, they've been finalized. It's a matter of just sending a clean copy back to Simplot and so I'm confident we we did have a discussion on should we pull this and bring it back? But we're confident enough that the license agreement will be in place shortly. So we'd like to move forward with this. We've bid the project. We have a contractor on board that's ready to start shortly after Thanksgiving, so we can get this in. The kids can use the pathway going back and forth to school mid-December, you know, after Christmas break in the spring. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Great job. This is one of the intersections. Well, one of the areas that came out in our intersection safety task force is identified for needing additional ways for kids to get to that school. As around it on both sides, we have no sidewalks. And this helps greatly up until the time we get those sidewalks and those developments come through. So I think it's a fantastic idea and I'm so glad that we got the approvals to make this happen.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to get it done.
Councilman Cameron.
Mike, sounds like you got a plan. I always get a little nervous when I don't have every last dot on an I and a T crossed. Council grants the budget amendment. Something goes upside down with a license agreement.
We won't spend the money. It'll be returned to the general fund.
That diddled on that. So without a license agreement, we're not going to spend these dollars.
I I I knew that would be the case. I just, I wanted. Pressure goes up just just a skosh each time we talk about it. No concern on my part.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Thank you, Mike. I apologize if I missed this. But this is, this pathway is going along the lateral, correct? And was there any fencing needed or discussed or included in this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, that's a great question. This lateral right there is about eight inches deep and maybe three feet wide. So if if there's, you know, I mean, that would be a concern for sure if there's school age children walking without fencing next to a like a canal. But anybody that would have a. But anybody that would have a problem with that much, that shallow water shouldn't be out there alone.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is a desire for a fence, that's something that we would approach West Ada about helping install, I believe, were the conversations.
There is an, there is one, one area that's more easily accessible than than another. And that area was talked about with fencing, I mean, the entire, if if West Ada thinks so, that would be, it would be on them. It's almost a thousand feet of fencing, so I don't know. Their plans are not, but I but I'm I'm confident that it's not a attractive nuisance or a danger to elementary school kids that are walking there. It's it's really honestly, it's really risky.
Yeah, I just like to echo, A, I think Dave's upstairs watching. I know that he was actually talking with Emily right before we came down, still trying to work on some of these elements. But I really want to just give him a much appreciation for his work with Simplot and the school district and helping and the irrigation district. I mean, Dave's the, especially when it comes to irrigation district, the gift that keeps on giving in a lot of ways. But it was also his coordination with Simplot to help get the parties in the room to help make this conversation. So thank you, Dave, for that. And thank you to the team for getting this all put together and ready to go to work. And we'll get the legal work done and we'll get a pathway connected, especially in light of the ongoing dialogue around Brian's favorite intersection of Amity and Locust Grove and not knowing the future, honestly, of when or how that will ever manifest itself. So this is more important for that reason as well. So thank you. All right, if not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Move that we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget amendment for the not to exceed amount of a hundred and forty four thousand nine hundred dollars for the Mary McPherson Elementary Pathway.
Have a motion in a second to approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion? If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Straitor.
Hi.
Overton. Barrow.
Hi.
Cavanagh. Hoagland.
Hi.
All eyes, motion carries, the AM is agreed to. Thank you very much. All right, next item up is I'm twenty three, Lakeview Golf Course Fiscal Year twenty twenty three, Financial Performance, New Fiscal Year twenty twenty four piece and projected outcomes. Mr. Martin, back to you.
I'm going to stay right here, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. We wanted to give you just a brief preliminary report on the financial outcome of FY twenty three at the golf course. These numbers are not final yet. We still have some bills coming in at the end through September that need to be paid. The revenue is final, the bills might not be. So these numbers will fluctuate a little bit, but overall, things are very positive. We had a really good year at the golf course and kind of keeping in that, keeping with that tone, we have developed a proposal for new fees going forward. The new fees that you have in front of you are a a four percent to the season passes. And then and then how and and just a little bit of a backstory on how we arrived at these fees. So it's a four percent increase to the passes to keep up with inflation. What we did to the greens fees is we we went and we looked at our competitors. We went to what the full market would suggest we charge and we cut that in half. We didn't want to hit people with that shock. We thought maybe that that would also have maybe a counter effect and and have affect negatively on the amount of rounds, the volume of business there. So I think that the fees that we have are a solid proposal. We anticipate some good numbers going forward and I think with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mike, council questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Question, but a comment, a compliment. I think we're starting to see and reap the rewards of all the hard work that's gone in by all of the park staff at the golf course. So much good inputs come from the neighbors on everything you guys have done. And I know that's got to play a part in how much more popular and how much more use it's getting. And it's a testament to all the hard work you guys have put in.
Yeah, thank you, and I agree, these men back here are do a lot of, lot of the heavy lifting. It's great. So we will be happy to answer any more questions, but we don't need any formal action tonight. We'll notice these fees and come back in a public hearing in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you, and echo the sentiments of Councilman Overton to the whole team and look forward to the continued improvements, investment, and also getting it to a market rate that works great for everybody involved and recovers the costs that we are trying to recover out there. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to I'm twenty four, Ada County Highway District Capital Roadway Improvement Guide Matrix. And so, Ms. McClellan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to discuss the ACHD Capital Improvement Guide with you tonight. I will likely drift back and forth calling this the guide and the matrix habit, so I'm sorry in advance. Staff have been working on this project with the consultant in ACHD since for all of this year. This is a project overview, cover the background, policy framework, the guide, which is three parts, and the next steps. Just a little bit of a forewarning, I think Caleb's online, but I'm helping cover the next item as well. And since these two relate, I will sort of drift to the next item, which is the Black Cat and McMillan Roundabout Intersection. This is a very brief overview of the city's involvement in ACHD Capital Improvement Projects. This guide is for roadway and intersections only. There's other types of AZG capital projects that we aren't discussing, such as bridges. Once initiated, projects on average are five or so years. That includes concept design, design right away, and then start of construction. In this period, a lot of change occurs. There isn't a project that I've been involved with for a decade for a section line mile of roadway that hasn't seen a lot of change. Major changes are sometimes political, sometimes engineering, and there's also smaller changes like cost, timing, constructive materials, and those all sort of interact and there's several interrelated reasons for this matrix. The first is that ACHD will not or cannot install landscaping. There's opportunity to to enhance roadways and meaningfully address speed management and user comfort for all users that they can't explore. The cost share allows the city to support enhanced projects by committing to project features that affect project design, construction, and bidding. There are willing, they being ACHD are willing to reimburse us for features that don't that they don't otherwise have to install, for example, concrete. And and that work towards a common goal and otherwise unachievable without a partnership. Maintenance is usually something that the city takes on for soft scape that is not stormwater related. Our goal with this project is to enable better communication earlier to establish expectations, to help council get a better idea of what the commitment is and why, and to help address project needs and importantly, have an agreement with ACHD completed before we get too far along on the in these. As mentioned before, the matrix is really three parts, the introduction, this is really documenting the process. You have a copy before you, then I also sent you a PDF last week, and then Chris will have it on later, laser fish later. Things get lost and forgotten, the interagency institutional memory is something that we struggle with. And then also just the process. This is also highlights opportunities for the city in ACHD to actually partner, just towards different goals, but the same one. A lot of focus in this work is how the city can expand tools unavailable to ACHD to improve safety, to create more consistent traffic flow, and generally just to make a better project. Vertical elements in the street are one of the best ways to do these, but the options to ACHD are often limited, ugly, or more costly for less impact. Most of this is really for staff, both the city and ACHD. Concepts are both a communication tool for staff and then decision makers. That's the second part of this, city council. I'm sorry, it just helps with understanding and then to better address cost share, which again, I'll be following up with this shortly for the Black Cat and McMillan intersection. The appendix is really something of a white paper. It's why we think this is important and it helps to bridge some gaps that engineering is currently kind of struggles to address. But it is things that other disciplines understand, how how people interact with their space. So this here is a matrix, one of two, actually, this one's for the roadway, there's a companion one for the intersection slash roundabouts. The other, this is really the primary communication tool for staff, what's most helpful for for us. Over the years, ACHDs changed their standards, multiple councils and commissions have come and gone, and staff have changed. So this is really intended, again, just to keep hitting this point, improve consistency. Matrix starts on the left column here. This identifies the general sort of cross section we're looking at. So whether there's a median, no median. Broadly speaking here, level one is not bad and level four is not good. These are just levels of effort and different conditions may warrant different needs. The second column here is the baseline improvements. This is what ACHD will do for these different cross sections, these different cross section, project types. If the city does not do anything, typically that is stamped concrete in several different colors, and they're also increasingly doing some metal barriers. This one here, so levels one through four, these are the levels of participation that the city, that the staff see the city sort of getting engaged with these projects. The city would receive cost share credits for all of these described in the matrix. Level one represents minimal immediate cost with cost share covering most of the city's cost, and then the city covering greater maintenance over a period of time. Level two and three are generally sort of the same level of effort, but different, one focuses more on hardscape and physical improvements like poles, the other one focuses on landscaping. And then level four is more intensive, both initial costs and the maintenance. As an example, most of an HOA's landscape buffer for level four as an example, that might be used is when a HOA's landscape buffer is largely removed from a project, when enough right of ways is preserved. This would provide an opportunity in roundabouts and medians to sort of restore some of that community identity. It's not clear right now, consistency is a big part of this. Design influences are intended to be similar, reflecting constraints, size, and then speed management across all levels. This here is an example of a cross section and a cut sheet. A lot of the design influences these have been driven by historical influences, such as staff experience, and then also recent council conversations, such as the Eustace corridor. Rhythm, repetitions, spacing, and other elements are all important in all of these, and they all have a shared sort of thematic. We've had good support from ACHD in all of these, and they are eager to use these. On the left are basic descriptions. Intent of these is to identify the spacing, the surface treatments. In the middle is a simple CAD perspective rendering, and then below are some descriptions of the general improvements. Most of these things are on the cut sheets, they're just, or on the matrix, these cut sheets just help to sort of depict them. We have one of these cut sheets for every cell on both of the matrices, so the roadway and the landscape, I'm sorry, the intersection roundabouts. In contrast, what staff usually have to discuss with council are general ideas, construction drawings and sketches, or delineation of responsibilities, or the conversation is happening very late in the game, such as the next project with Black Cat and McMillan. Level one is generally what staff is going to be looking towards for standard arterial roadways. Medians with vertical elements and landscaping have the largest potential to reduce the feeling of massive boulevards. So just lots of asphalt and lots of concrete. More broadly, level one through four all look and feel similar. It's more about the number of things going into a space, a complexity. It's going to be context sensitive and staff recommendation is generally going to come down to what is needed for speed management, rehabilitation of landscaping being removed, and then other community needs. I I will now drift a little bit into the Black, a lot into the Black Cat and McMillan, which is the next item. Staff brought this project to council, specifically, rather, Caleb brought this project to council on July twenty fifth to discuss potential landscaping elements. Council expressed an interest in including some landscaping, but wanted to hear more about a consistent palette of materials to be used throughout the city. The proposed design here at a very high level includes multi-lane roundabout with truck apron, multi-use pathways with crosswalks and rectangular rapid flashing beacons for each of the pedestrian crossings. As alluded to earlier, staff is moving towards a level one participation in the matrix for this project. This would provide a consistent thematic for the primary roundabouts as other new and planned roundabouts in a city. And then where possible, also provides some additional interest in the buffers. These are low maintenance and low water use designs. Since this project is still living in the past a bit, it's it's an older project that's just not working its way through. Some of the buffers are smaller, and so there's going to be less opportunities here in the splitter islands, the sort of smaller medians, and then the landscape buffers between the backup curb and the multi-use pathways. You may not be able to do as much here. For contrast, this is a level four level of effort for a roundabout. It's really just more intense landscaping, more rock features. I don't think it does anything less, especially for a smaller roundabout like this. Regardless, the city will also be asking for ACHD to restore and improve areas outside of the roundabout, so it's not their earth that will not be part of a cost share or on the city for this. There's two projects sort of smashed together or two two agenda items. The first sort of one was I'm looking for feedback from from council on the matrix, any concerns or tweaks we can make? This is something that staff is going to be using to, again, just for institutional knowledge if nothing else. And then secondly, whether there's any concern that council has with moving forward with the level one level of effort for a roundabout design at the Black Cat and McMillan intersection.
Thank you, Brian. So council, let's go on to I'm twenty four. Do you have comments, feedback, questions regarding the information that's been provided?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Brian, thank you very much for these worksheets, they're really helpful to understand the differences between the between the different sections of the matrix. The one question I have is I can't tell the difference between cut sheet, or excuse me, series A level one and series B level one. Do you just run through that one more time?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, series A has there's some, so series A has no medians with buffer strips that don't allow for trees. And then a median that also doesn't allow for trees, so there's there's two there. So median and no median, both that, both that do not allow for basically parkway trees. And then series B is median and no medium that allow for parkway trees. Basically, if if the buffer is less than eight feet, the city isn't going to generally want to do trees. And then if the buffer is more than eight feet, we would be open to doing trees. And the reason for that is ACHD requires for anything less than eight feet, or anything greater than six feet, but less than eight feet, ACHD requires root bearer, which protects the asphalt and the road surface and the concrete for the sidewalk or multi-use pathway from root damage, so heating basically of the surface, if that makes sense. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
What I love about this, Brian, is that you took a situation where we're having a new conversation every time and reinventing the wheel, and you have standardized it in a scalable way that can be used as a methodology going forward. That is like government excellence to me, that is phenomenal. So I just want to compliment you because this is the right approach to take to this sort of thing. I love that it's adapted, ACHD must love it because this takes a lot of guesswork out of the equation every single time. So hats off to you on that. My only question was around the native plants and stuff, and is there sort of an opportunity? Because I think we we definitely didn't want each one to be the same, right? That was a piece of it, we wanted a little bit of differentiation, but but to sort of standardize it. And have you guys thought about, you know, the types of plants that are helpful, that that will thrive and all that stuff? You gotten into with, you know, Mike or other people into the plants and all that stuff yet? Or are you sort of getting iron out those details later?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, that was a converse, sorry, I can't see you and talk on the mic at the same time. That was, that was a conversation we had with, as a team regularly. That was a conversation we had with, as a team regularly. Native plants, adapted plants, amount of water necessary to allow plants to grow. There's a cost there regardless of what we do, or even with adapted or native plants that do work here, we have to have the irrigation source to water them occasionally. The level of effort there is sort of awash. It's certainly something we can do. The purpose of this isn't to specify specific plants every single time. We definitely like the idea of fitting in with, you know, existing neighborhood thematic. So if they've got a lot of red or yellow, whatever that is, more deciduous, more evergreen, that's something we can definitely discuss with projects. We're just trying to have a high-level awareness and understanding of what we want to do for general massing, general thematic, general scale. I think we're all very much interested in doing adapted plants and low water use plants, even potentially no water plants where possible, but it's a harder conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I just have one more question, which is, you know, we've run into situations where HOAs have installed these like complex, very elaborate roundabouts. Would the intent going forward be in those situations to require them to follow this standard going forward? Have we sort of had those conversations, or are we expecting that HOA, or, you know, if developer controls all four corners of intersection and they're putting in improvements, do we expect that they'll still be doing something different on their end?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, that has, we've discussed that. There's certainly some concerns with long-term public maintenance and ownership of those types of projects, you know, when the development has gone away. But we've not discussed requiring developers to adhere to this particular effort.
Thank you.
So Brian, I assume that you've mentally looked at this, but I guess my question is, moving forward, where do you actually see this being applied? And just take like Locust Grove as an example, where you have, Locust Grove essentially built from Franklin now down to Amity. But they may go back and, you know, the mile from Fairview to Eustac is yet to be improved. Or the mile from Victory to Amity is yet to be improved. Are we looking at corridor applications where you're going to create this boulevard effect? Are we looking at one-mile segments? Are we thinking eventually we're going to go back and redo other segments that would have similar stuff? I'm just trying to get a sense of like, we're going to be a patchwork of this mile gets it, then we're not going to have it for four miles. And then this mile will get it based upon how we've already developed or otherwise, or what was the general thought process?
Mr. Mayor, that's a really good question. So we've heard from council pretty loud and clear that you're interested in consistency, particularly for corridors. Newer corridors are going to be different. Sections of Eustac, for example, have bike lanes, and A C H D's completely moved away from that. So there's things that have just changed and will change. I think where we have opportunity for these, no matter what, particularly as we get into the newer areas of the city, is to see the medians done, which in my opinion has the most opportunity for helping with speed management. And then A C H D's always, if they're going to do multi-use pathways, they're always going to have a buffer between the multi-use pathway in the backup curb, or they can't call it a multi-use pathway. So I think there will always be opportunity for these, the specific landscape improvements we put in there. It'd be nice if we adhered to a palette or ran with something consistent that we've seen elsewhere in the area, but I'm not going to commit anyone to that now. But I do think we can be consistent with projects moving forward as we work our way from sort of existing from Victory South and Locust Grove, for example. I think we can have consistent levels of improvement out there. As I noted, I think staff is generally comfortable with level one unless there's some other reason why we need to do something else.
And so corridor consistency may be considered where we may have a project, I'm sure, say, we shouldn't do this because it would seem to be awkward in an environment. That could be an outcome.
Mr. Mayor, definitely. There's always going to be, nature of this is, there's, everything is an exception, right? So I think we're going to be working with that constantly, but what we're trying to start with here is the city saying this is what we want. And then A C H D will do their best to implement that. But you're right, there's always exceptions.
Yeah, because I can see like Black Cat hasn't been improved, McMillan hasn't been improved, segments going forward. But if you're going to go back and do one, and it's going to be completely out of character, but, you know, there's, that can work in some situations. That's where I was really kind of going to like, oh yeah, we're going to recommend we go to this level. But no other mile segment on that road would have that. I'd hope it would be justified why we would want to do one specific if we go that route.
Mr. Mayor, I think an opportunity for a lot of this is to really help A C H D with speed management. They've been struggling with vertical elements, which is the way you really get there. If you look at the new section of Locust Grove, it's a highway. There's hardly any medians out there. There's no landscape buffers. It's, I really appreciate all their effort to go out there, but it's sort of tragic that we missed that, especially when the city requested repeatedly when they were designing that to be involved. Times have changed, but I think that would be in a case of, we can do this even if it's not consistent. Because what we want to do here is not necessarily be consistent, but we want to find a way to slow traffic down so that when we sign at 35, police aren't constantly enforcing 45.
All the residents appear to be putting up vertical barriers on their property. So they're doing what they can to slow people down, even though it won't impact traffic speeds. Sorry, sidebar. Council, any other questions specifically on item 24 for Brian?
Sure, one real quickly.
Councilwoman Kavanagh.
Brian, thanks for this. And Councilmember Schrader, I think, brought up a good point that at least had my brain spinning. And so I'm curious if the department's discussed if a landowner owns all four corners and they are trying to do something. We've seen some, the private sector do some things that are kind of creative and different. Does that count towards like an amenity point? Is that something that your department has considered as like, it's not qualified open space, but it does contribute to the character of the community, definitely, I think, creates a sense of place? Is that something that the department has explored at least recognizing in a many-point style?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kavanagh, I don't know. So I don't believe, I believe there's flexibility in the amenity system. I don't know if we would allow something that's done through a license agreement in the middle of right-of-way to count or not, though. Mr. Mayor.
The voice from the sky, Mr. Hood.
It's Caleb. To answer Mr. Kavanagh's question maybe a little more directly, we have thought about it. We have not, in a couple of instances, we've not actually granted the developer any landscape or amenity points for that. In fact, some of the roundabouts that have been constructed, the city hasn't even really been part of the conversation. It really is something that is negotiated between data county highway district and that developer in the right of way. So it really is sort of outside of the development review process that the city's involved with anyways, and something that's again negotiated between the developer and A C H D.
So, Mr. Mayor.
That's one cap here.
Recognize that the time for debate around roundabouts is not this time and place. I just, I support when development does these types of things. I do think it helps to create a sense of place that I think we as a community are always trying to do. And if there are opportunities down the way for the department to at least explore how we could recognize that, it's something that I think would warrant a future conversation.
Yeah. Council, any additional questions on item 24? Then with that, we'll move on to item 25 officially. Regarding the Black Cat, McMillan intersection cost share discussion. Mr. Hood, did you have anything to add since your name was officially listed for myself on this item?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, and thank you, Brian, for covering that, integrating that specific project into your presentation on the matrix guide. I don't have anything. There is a memo there. I apologize that I'm not there in person. I'm laid up currently at home. So apologies that I'm not there to present in person, but I appreciate Brian covering for me. There are those few areas there that staff recommends. We do partner with A C H D on the level one improvements to take it above the baseline that we don't otherwise get, which is essentially stamped and colored concrete. And the mayor just used both of these roadways as examples. I think we are setting the stage then for that consistency on McMillan and Black Cat both. When those roadway segments are widened adjacent, we are starting that pattern down that roadway of what likely will happen in those buffer and media and center median areas.
Thank you, council. Any questions or comments for Caleb, Brian, or generally?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Yeah, in going through that, I think a level one is appropriate for that particular area and a lot of things. I think level one is the right approach, so I'm pleased with that. I was just thinking through Councilman Kavanagh's remarks about, you know, credits for that and different things. And I was kind of thinking, well, they impact the traffic. They have to have these to make traffic flow. So I wasn't in favor of giving them any credit, but different view of it, we don't have to cross that bridge right now, but that's right. So for, but for this, having a level one approach, I think will work well. And you appreciate the work everyone put into this for the roundabouts and the matrix. It does, it does help quite a bit, I think, for everyone involved now and in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm in favor of it. I appreciated the pedestrian treatment as well, and that's really important at that roundabout. You said there were enhanced beacons, so I think that's important in that location. Thank you.
So maybe a practical question for legal or for Brian. It's one thing, it's one thing to say this is what we want today. It's another thing when a budget amendment comes forward. At what point in time do people envision these decisions actually being made and/or agreed to financially? You know, and this is under the consideration that this is what A C H D actually even builds to a certain extent, you know? But I think that there is that component. Us, how you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Caleb.
I know you directed that more to Brian or council, if you don't mind, though, I think.
I forgot you were on the thing evil, so.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, it is a good question, and Brian pointed it out when he was going through the matrix. But we are trying to get into these projects and our elements incorporated earlier in projects. And likely that is two or three, four years before a project actually gets constructed. So there can be and likely will be some turnover in leadership. There is a level of commitment, though, a cost share agreement that we will enter into with A C H D. It's sort of a general person's agreement at that point, saying we're good for it. But we really aren't committed until we establish the budget. There is a chance that a future council does not approve that item in the budget. If so, though, this cost share agreement that the previous council agreed to, we will pay for, and we're on the hook for redesigning those elements. So if A C H D has to expend dollars to redesign something because we re-nig or rethink of something that we wanted to put in, and they made that accommodation, and we backtrack, any redesign cost will be billed to the city. So there is an opportunity to back out, but there is some level of commitment and saying that we're good for it earlier on in the process.
Mr. Mayor, is there a preferred approach on this for your office or not? Since we're talking about encumbering or non-encumbering in any way, shape, or form?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think what we'd end up doing is in our ultimate agreement where for the cost share would have a non-appropriation clause to it. So we'd say if we don't fund it in the future, I think we have the conditions that Mr. Hood just talked about that would pay for the cost of whatever redesign or whatever if they had to redo it. But I think that we would want to have something that says a future council may not fund the project depending on how it is or when it is, and those kinds of things. We'd like to have that anyway.
Is that the preferred approach as compared to having the council that asks for it, pays for it at the time? I mean, it hasn't been bid, so you're never going to get the exact number. But I guess a future council could undo the budget as well. I mean, I'm just trying to get through this, the stuff we experienced on Eagle when they were doing that, where we were asking for changes, and they weren't willing to accommodate based upon some of those, just want to make sure that we are trying to make, and again, four years now is a long time to be saying, here's what we want, even though it's just landscaping or vertical elements.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, there really is either way, as the mayor just stated. I mean, they're funded upfront, ask for what you want, obviously funded upfront with basically a number that's not to exceed, obviously waiting a bid. Or secondarily, agree to a generalized number as to what that might be. We can put that in the contract, but we would create a clause that would say a future council may not fund a future project based on timing change and circumstance change in situation, whatever that may be. So either one of those would be compliant with what the law requires. So either one of those are fine from a legal standpoint.
Mr. Mayor, Emily would, I'm sure, love this conversation if she was here, but just if it's helpful. You know, this isn't any different than what we do now. It's not that it's a good process, but we do this now. We've been doing this for years. The only thing that's really changed with this, one, we have a matrix to formalize a little bit better so that we have greater confidence and greater leverage. When we say this is what we're willing to participate in, and two, A C H D's only recently decided they're going to be doing the credit system. So that's really where I, staff is more interested in this now is because they're willing to give us the money to basically do things that they wouldn't otherwise do. Again, not that this process is good, but this is what we've been doing for a decade.
And I know that's what we've been doing, basically trying to make it so it's not a conversation in three years where a different council sees us and says, what is this? Why are we doing it this way? Now, granted, if you see it every year for every project, for two or three projects, maybe they'll, it will provide that. That's all, it's like, it's one thing to say this is what we want today. Three years from now, it could be completely different. So, that's all. And there's no good answer. That's what I'm going to go with. Okay. Any further comments or feedback on something that we aren't going to make an agreement or decision on for the next three years? Councilwoman Kavanagh.
Wishing Caleb a speedy recovery, although we don't have any authority to fix or solve either, but we're hopeful for a speedy recovery as well.
Thank, I think he appreciates that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Holton, I move that we adjourn our work session. I have a motion to second adjourn the work session on favor of six five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those name.
Yes, have it, we are adjourned. Those name, yes, have it, we are adjourned. Those name, yes, have it, we are adjourned.
Council, we'll call them into order for the record is October 17th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's regular city council meeting with the roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, Councilman Overton, Councilwoman Perro, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Hoagland, Mayor Simison.
Here, next item up is the Pledge of Laisers. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody signed under community invocation?
Mr. Mayor, we do not. It's a very busy season. Everybody I've reached out to was unavailable.
Okay, the next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We do have one item to remove this evening. Item number three, the 2023 UDC text amendment. Planning has been in discussions with fire department and they've determined at this time their deciding can be delayed until council has more information. You know, and we do have a process for taller buildings in our community that if someone wants to do something right now, there is a process to go through that can be taken up. So that's not causing any, any particular issue at this time. So I'm going to move adoption of the agenda without item three, ZOA 2023-0001.
Second.
I have a motion second to adopt it in his minister discussion. If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Guys have it and the agenda is adopted as amended. Mr. Clerk, you want to sign up under future meet topics?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move on to item one, which is a resolution number 232418. Establishing the point of Andy Ariaga to the seat three of the Meridian Solid Waste Advisory Commission and providing an effective date. So Steve Corey and I met together with Andy and we talked about his interest in serving. He originally had applied for some other of our commissions. He's a newer resident to the area and has really just a basic interest in serving our community. That was his primary driving factor. But what really kind of caught my attention in our conversation was his financial background. And Chris and Chairman Corey also agreed with all the conversations that we're going to be having with Ada County on rates and issues moving forward. We felt like adding his financial abilities to SWAC to help be part of that ongoing conversation, whether it's about the rates that they're charging per ton or any other elements that it could provide a great benefit to the commission. So he's excited to give back and serve. He's not here in the audience. I don't know if he's on, he's not online either, as far as I can tell. But he showed up, he's gotten engaged here in the treasure valley in various different ways. This is how he wants to continue to do it. And then council, the trader can understand getting out of that finance sector environment and giving back. And that's where he is in his life. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm holding.
I move that we approve resolution number 23-2418, appointing Andy Ariaga to seat three of the Meridian Solid Waste Advisory Commission.
Second.
Have motion and seconds to approve resolution number 23-2418. Is it in discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Guys have it and the resolutions agree to. And we will go on to our public hearing items, which is item two, which is public hearing for H D rezone, H 2023-0039. And we'll open this public hearing for staff with staff comments from Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The applicant has submitted a rezone. The site consists of 0.60 acres of land currently zoned CC located at 1508 North Meridian Road. History on the property is none. The comprehensive loom designation is Old Town. And the purpose of the request for the rezoning is to facilitate the renovation of an existing detached garage while retaining the property's current residential use. Furthermore, rezoning to Old Town would allow the applicant to submit building permit applications for constructing a new building and making structural modifications to the existing building without obtaining a conditional use permit for each proposed improvement on the site. A single family detached dwelling unit is considered a non-conforming use in the CC zoning district per the UDC. The applicant intends to retain the existing home while renovating the old detached garage situated behind the home. Additionally, the applicant has future plans to potentially construct an accessory dwelling unit or live work structure at a later date. Access is provided via North Meridian Road and arterial street via a fully improved U-shaped driveway. This driveway does not adhere to the ACH district, ACHD's district guidelines for successive driveways in terms of alignment or offset as it falls short of a minimum of 330 feet separation from any existing or proposed driveway and is not located a minimum of 355 feet away from the nearest intersection. Since the applicant is not intensifying or changing the use of the property, staff and ACHD are supportive of the driveway configuration remaining for the residential use. Per the UDC, when a property takes access from an arterial street and prior to any new expanded or extended use or development of the property to adjoining properties, the property owner is required to grant cross-access. Further, this requirement may extend to residential properties where the use is anticipated to change to a non-residential use. As noted above, the property owner intends to expand the site in the future. Since the property, but several undeveloped properties and there is the potential for further expansion on the property, staff believes cross-access is warranted. But identifying which properties and the exact location for the shared driveways will be determined when an actual development is proposed for the property. This may include closing one or both driveways. Staff recommends that in the event the property intensifies or redevelops in the future, the applicant should provide cross-access to the neighboring properties located to the south, north, east, any east to eliminate the need for multiple accesses off the arterial roadway within close proximity in accordance with the UDC. The existing home has a driveway off Meridian Road that contains a 20 by 20 parking pad and a two-car garage. In reviewing the county assessor's records, it appears the home currently has three bedrooms there for the parking. Provided on site meets the minimum requirements of the UDC. There is an existing seven-foot wide sidewalk on Meridian Road along the existing property frontage that is consistent with ACHD's district policy for arterial roadways. With the exception of the dedicated right-of-way, therefore additional right-of-way dedicating totally 90, totally 96 feet on Meridian Road abutting the site should be required as part of a future application. Also, as part of a future development application, the applicant should be required to provide a permanent right-of-way easement to two feet behind the back of sidewalk for any sidewalk placed outside of the dedicated right-of-way. A landscape buffer is not required for a single-family dwelling unit in the Old Town zoning district. The UDC does not regulate landscaping on residential lots. However, the existing house is currently set back approximately 30 feet from Meridian Road, leaving several areas in front of the residence that could be landscaped to enhance the streetscape along Meridian Road. Staff believes the street frontage should be landscaped with a mix of tree, shrub, lawn, hardscapes, or a water conserving design in accordance with the UDC. Building elevations consist of stucco, brick and asphalt and roof shingles. As on the existing home, a design review application is not required for single-family dwellings. However, when the property redevelops to commercial uses in the future, a design review will be required. Commission recommendation for this application was approved. Summary of the commission public hearing in favor was Dave Petchy, the owner. In opposition was none. Commenting was none. Written testimony was none. Key issues of discussion were none. Key issues of discussion by commission were none. Commission changes to staff's recommendation is none. And outstanding issues for city council are none. And written testimony since the commission hearing is currently none. And this concludes staff's presentation and I stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Council questions for staff. Okay, is the applicant here? Do I come forward and add any additional comments? Just ask it a way to get to the mic and say your name and address.
Dave Petchy. 1508 North Meridian Road. Yeah, the future, I don't have a plan yet, but I was thinking of doing something in the back portion of the property and doing like a work-live building where I can make an ADU above it and work out of the chop area below. That was my plan down the road, but for now it's just to upgrade the little storage shed thing. It's totally rotten roof and I just need to fix it all up, make it look good.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the correct pronunciation of your name. I appreciate that. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say that this is creative thinking and I think it's cool when people want to bring additional housing units to our community because they're getting harder and harder to come by. So for taking the effort to do this and Old Town is a good, is a good location for that.
Great. Thank you very much. Just quickly, everyone sent to write testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, is there anybody present who would like to provide testimony on this item? Or, and if you're online, you can use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. And it's only city staff on Zoom. So if there's anybody present in the room. You know, I'm wishing to come forward. Does the applicant have any final comments? Okay, no final comments. Capital waves. Council, what's your direction or desires?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Seeing no more public comments, I move we close the public hearing.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Guys have it and the public hearing is closed. Councilman Overton.
After considering all staff getting public testimony, I move we approve file number H 2023-0039.
I have a motion second to approve item H 2023-0039. Is there discussion? If not, call it all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Aye. All eyes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you very much and good luck. Item three was taken off the agenda, so we'll move to item four, which is ordinance number 23-2038. Ask clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance amending the title of Title III Meridian City Code to be licenses and permits. Amending the title of Title III, Chapter One, Meridian City Code to be general licensing and permitting provisions. Amending Meridian City Code Section 311 regarding licenses or permits required. Adding Meridian City Code Section 314 regarding notice and effective date of issuance, denial or revocation of licenses and permits. Adding Meridian and City Code Section 315 regarding appeal of denial, conditions or revocation of licenses and permits. Repealing, replacing Title III, Chapter Eight, Meridian City Code regarding fireworks. Adding a new chapter, Chapter Four, to Title Four, Meridian City Code regarding burning regulations. Repealing chapters one, three and four of Title Five, Meridian City Code, formally regarding fire department, clean air regulations and fireworks. Repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Is anybody that would like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 23-2038.
I have a motion second to prove ordinance number 23-2038. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater, Overton, Perrow, Cavanagh, Hoagland.
Aye. All eyes, motion carries and the ordinance is agreed to. With that, we'll move on to item five.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move that we go into executive session for Idaho Code Section 74-2061D.
Have a motion second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater, Overton, Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Hoagland.
All eyes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. We'll move in. All eyes, motion carries. I have as agreed to. We'll move in.